January 12, 2023. We're at the Independence Utility Center on 2023 Street. So Madam.
Councilwoman Spears, Perkins, Stewart, McCandless, Steinmeier, Hobart, Mayor Roland.
The rest of us have two people to speak. Lucy Young has asked to speak. So Lucy, if you can take this podium up here and speak for me. There is a microphone there. Thank you.
Lucy Young, 2023, Vicar Drive. This has got to be the safest room in Independence tonight. Thank you for coming. I'd like to talk to you about your discussion you had the other day. And I understand we were some of the few that were lucky enough to be elected and to serve our citizens and want only the best for them. But I'll tell you, as a councilwoman, I fought tooth and nail to try to get IPD what they needed. And at this time, they do need a building. And it's up to you to figure out how to fund it. Sorry, I'm a little nervous this more than I expected. But we've got to look at the past because the old police building, 200 North Main, is a derelict building. The building that the police are in now created the bonderant decision. So this needs to be done correctly. While you can vote to put this tax in place so that you can use it for maintenance today, you need to think about what you're going to do, the program you're going to provide to the citizens to get them behind a bond issue to build a new building. It cannot be done piecemeal. Back in 2004, people voted, they were on the council, to put in a retail building that has ended up costing the citizens over $100 million by 2045. That in itself could take for this new building we need. No more mistakes like that need to be made. You need to have a thorough study to find out exactly how much money you need. If it's the $90 million, you need to have the FOP 100% out selling those bonds. The people don't trust the people that are in City Hall. The people trust you. They need to see you. They need to hear from you. And they need to know that this is all about putting you in a safer situation because you go out on the streets every night and risk your lives for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Butch Nesbit is next.
Butch Nesbit, 3817 South Milton Drive. Lucy, you said a great thing right there. These guys do work for us. They are protecting us. They're here for us. We have not been there for them on this building. They are one, one catastrophe from having to bring in FEMA trailers. So we need to do this, but we need to do it right. But we also, this is pennies. We need to get, we probably need to ask some people probably for $100 million or more because there's more things that need to be fixed in the city. The street department down here where they house a lot of their equipment, but it's probably 1930s, 1940s buildings. They're falling apart too. It's just not the police building. We got other buildings that need to be done too. So we could be easily asking for 150, 200 million dollars. I know that's a lot of money, but we're going to have to buy it and do it or it's not going to happen around here. We're just going to let the city fall down. Like I say, we need to step up and ask our citizens for a lot more money and to help us. So that's what, now I'm here, I don't mind it. We need to help our people out. So we need to get behind these people and get this happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit. The next round of presentation, the marijuana tax. So Mr. City Manager, ready to go? Next round of presentation, the marijuana tax. Mr. City Manager, if you're ready to go.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Ms. Young and Mr. Nesbit have made my presentation, so I'll sit back down. Now, in all seriousness, thank you all for gathering back together for a second time this week on an issue of critical importance for our, our community as we look to a potential opportunity to address some longstanding needs in our community. Just as a reminder of where we started and left off on Monday evening, this past November, the voters here across our state legalized the possession and utilization of marijuana for recreational purposes in the state of Missouri. That was a constitutional amendment, and I state that to let you know, you know, that is not going anywhere unless and until that is repealed from the constitution. Which leads me into my next point, which is that among the provisions of that constitutional amendment are an opportunity for cities and counties across the state to pursue a 3% local option sales tax on retail sales of recreational marijuana. Again, that makes that a very permanent funding source, about as permanent as you can get, something that's been embedded into our state's constitution. The first opportunity that cities have to pursue that tax comes this April. And that is what we discussed on Monday night. And when we left off, you asked me to work with our staff to take a look at some of the key funding needs that we have here in our community. Now, obviously, we would be here for quite a while, maybe even a few days if we tried to take a look at all of the needs that exist across our city. But working with my staff over the last few days, we, we tried to identify what we think are some of those more critical needs and give you some information about that that we hope, as we come out of here tonight, will give you the information you need to provide direction about where you might want to see these resources go should our voters opt to impose this tax in our community. So one of the things I've done since we last convened was to get in touch through the Missouri Municipal League with our colleagues across the state. And as of yesterday evening, so there may likely be way more than this, but I've heard back from 72 jurisdictions across the state. Some quite small, others all the way as large as Kansas City and the city of St. Louis. Of those, not, not everybody was readily apparent how they're planning to use their resources, but 48 of those are just planning to ask their voters to support it for general revenue purposes. But of the ones that are specifying a use like our council is considering, the majority of those are considering using those for a public safety purpose of some kind. There were some other sort of general uses out there like street sales or street repairs, neighborhood preservation and livability, and mental health treatment and substance abuse. But like I said, vast majority of those that intend to specify and allocate their resources for a dedicated outcome are, are pursuing that for a public safety purpose. So these are the needs that my staff and I focused on that we're going to talk with you about tonight. And as I mentioned, this is not an all encompassing list by any means, but these are some of the options that we wanted to put in front of you tonight. You know, as Mr. Nesbit said, this makes no mention of infrastructure needs, of which there are many and staggering. $725 million in sidewalk needs across our city. $60 million to put in curbs in our community where they don't exist today. $173 million to do street overlay on the streets that fall below 50% of useful life as we measure it here in our community. Those are staggering numbers. But again, we don't think that's a conversation that needs to go away. In fact, it's probably one that needs to come forward. But what we want to talk to you about tonight are a couple of options here. So we're going to walk through these this evening. As I mentioned, some cities are allocating their funds for general revenue purposes, and that is certainly obviously a need in our community as well. Here in the city of Independence, our council has adopted a fund balance reserve policy of 16%, and that is a mark that we still, as of yet, have not been able to hit. We've certainly made progress, and this updated forecast is a much better looking picture than what we showed you at the, this time last year, which I think is attributable to both strong financial management and wise stewardship by, by this body. But we are still on a trajectory trending toward a negative fund balance by fiscal year 26, 27, when we would be at negative $3.6 million. And fiscal year 26, 27 is obviously not that far off into the future. And again, a better picture than what we have seen in the past, but also one that still is not anywhere remotely close to where we need it to be. The next issue, and one that we kind of had quite a bit of conversation about on Monday night, was code enforcement. Showed you some slides Monday night, and I'm trying to give you a different glance at that this evening. This obviously remains one of our top requested services in the community. And over the last three years, you can see some of the increases we've seen in that. For example, a 95% increase in the number of cases reported to the city, which in turn has resulted in a 71% increase in the number of cases each officer handles in the city. The number of abatements, which is cleaning up said violation, has increased by 121%. And not only are the number of cases increasing, but the cost is increasing. Number of cases that are now over $500 each has increased by 400%. And just this last year, we had 40 cases where that abatement was over $1,000 each and three that were over $3,000 apiece. Cost of everything is going up, and that includes cleaning up other people's messes. Part of, you know, code enforcement is dealing with buildings that have fallen into the city's dangerous building category. The number of demolitions has, has increased, but more importantly, the average cost of demolition has gone up so that over the last four years, we're now nearly $1,500 more than we were just four years ago. I would be remiss if when I'm talking to you about critical needs in the city, I didn't mention to you public transit as well. This was an issue that the council grappled with about four years ago. And then very fortuitously, one of the few good things that came out of the pandemic was a substantial amount of COVID relief funds for a variety of purposes, including public transit. But those funds expire after this coming fiscal year, at which time we are going to be facing a shortfall of $1.3 million in our public transit operation. This coming fiscal year, the general fund will need to subsidize that service by $3 per person who rides the bus. But in two years, when that service no longer has the federal funds propping it up, that's going to skyrocket to over $8 per person to provide that service. I just showed you a slide a few minutes ago about the deficit that we're facing. And with that deficit, it really remains unclear how we are going to fund this service. And we've got less than 18 months to answer that question. Along those same lines, just to give you a visualization of what I'm talking about, the blue line here represents the total cost of providing public transit. The orange is the amount that's coming in in federal funds to support that. You can see that beginning in 2020, 21, that's where it shifted to where we're using more federal funds than the gray line, which is our general fund dollars. But beginning in 24, 25, when that goes away, the general fund has to start subsidizing that service again. And that's what I'm talking about in 18 months. We'll have to figure out how to close that gap if we want to keep doing what we're doing today. The next issue I wanted to mention to you is our pension contribution rates. The city's contribution rates for our public employee retirement system are going to be increasing from $16 million today to $22.5 million by 2027. And the contribution for our public safety police employees is going to nearly double by 2030. These are inevitable costs. There's nothing we can do today to change. They're the result of past practice. They're financial obligations we have no option but to bear. We are going to need to develop a plan to absorb those costs and making sure that we've got adequate funds to address that so we can fulfill our pension obligations. Again, is not an option or a want to do, but it is a have to do. This just again will show you graphically the, the cost. The yellow line is all in, our, our pension costs. And you can see that spiking before in about eight, nine years, it begins to slowly decline back. But again, as I mentioned, these are costs that we'll need to absorb and work our way through over the next decade or so. Which brings me back to this beautiful building. And if this were all you saw, it'd probably be fine. But as Chief Desmond showed you the other night, there's a lot going on inside of this building. Our facilities are outdated, they are outgrown, and they are unsafe. Our staff have worked tirelessly, and I want to thank our municipal services director who's here tonight to try to address the needs within the very limited resources that we have. But the strategy of using a Band-Aid to address a severed artery is proving as ineffective as it sounds. And we can no longer afford to kick this can down the road. Choosing not to address this issue in 2019 has already had a financial consequence as building materials and prices are up 19.2% over last year and have risen by 35% since the start of the pandemic. And as I referenced on Tuesday night, there are issues aplenty in our police facilities. This is what we call the Peniston Building. That is on Truman Road and just down from the sewer maintenance building. You're looking inside of the fence line, which you may not be able to see from Truman Road. These are vehicles that are part of the Accident Investigations Unit, and that is a barrier meant to provide erosion control that has fallen and landed on evidence that happened on Tuesday, I believe, or yesterday, Wednesday, pardon me. So seemingly every day, there is some new calamity happening at one of our police facilities. I showed you this on Tuesday night, but it bears, driving home the point again, our police facility lags behind the average of some of these Missouri side facilities that have been renovated or reconstructed by 42 years. These facilities have invested on average nearly $22 million in their police facilities. And a city of our size, the, as I mentioned, the fifth largest city in the state has a facility that falls 13,000 square feet below the average of these facilities. I personally am a fan of college athletics. And just like college athletics, you have to invest in your facilities as part of an overall strategy for recruitment and retention of talent. And as Chief said Monday night, we are losing a very important recruiting edge with our facility. So I'm going to provide a little bit more information about the efforts that were afoot in 2018 and 19 because they provide the most recent information we have about trying to address this issue. And Ms. Young was right, there's been many efforts over the years to make a run at this. 2018 was but the most recent one to address that. This visual here is a site layout where you are tonight. No, we didn't plan it. We just had youth court tonight, and here we are. The building that is in the upper middle right quadrant is the building you're sitting in, the Independence Utility Center and the former medical office building at the hospital. At the bottom of the slider, to the south of that, if you orient yourself, is the communications center that has been built. What this shows you is just a conceptual layout of how all of the police facilities, which are currently scattered around the community, could be consolidated into a public safety campus here at this site. Now, this question came up since Monday night and when we were talking about this as a potential area, and I want to make sure I address this. This property, as it were, was purchased using Independence Power and Light Funds. And I want to make clear that it would be my recommendation that anyone acquiring this land, including the city of Independence, would need to pay at least the per acre price that the Independence Power Light ratepayers acquired this property with. So we would certainly look at the acreage, the, the cost per acre at the time, and at least address that to make that fund whole. This is a summary in 2019. Helix Architecture, a firm with offices here in the Kansas City metropolitan area, provided us a space program summary of, you know, our potential needs as we saw them in 2020 and then looking out 20 years beyond that. You can see in there, again, conceptual design that by 2040, they thought we would need 135,000 square foot facility, which was the, the figure that I referenced to you on Monday evening. Since Monday night, I have tried to take a look to get some additional data for you. And one of the speakers, sorry, I can't remember which one, but referenced that we really need to go back and take a look at these figures as part of a organized consolidated strategy. If, if pursuing a police facility is our chosen priority, then, then I would completely agree with that, that we, we need to clean these numbers up. But I want to give you just some additional perspective for contextual purposes tonight. Perryville, Missouri, which is listed second on there, broke ground this past Wednesday on a new justice center. And talking to their city administrator, these are some of the other jurisdictions that he and his team visited in the planning and exploratory phase of building their justice center. So all of these have been constructed within the last five years. All of these have different varying uses. Some have municipal courts, some don't. Some have room for the county sheriff's office or the highway patrol. Others are strictly a local police jurisdiction. But the point being that I would like you to take away from this is that if you look at that price per square foot, which is certainly increasing, again, the Grain Valley number should be cautionary to you. But on average, the price per square foot over the last five years in these jurisdictions has been about $500 a square foot. And keep in mind what I told you many ago, that year over year, those costs have increased about 19% of construction costs. But this gives you a representative sample of them. So again, this is illustrative only. I, you know, have not worked with a engineering or architecture firm, but just for conversational purposes. If we use that Helix figure from 2019 of assuming we needed 135,000 square feet for our needs, and you use the five-year average of some of those facilities here in the Midwest, that provides you an estimated project cost of around $68 million. A 30-year loan, which would probably be the maximum amount that a municipality could bond out for, would need debt service at at least $2.3 million. But again, Monday night, we talked about potentially 89 million. There is a range in here. I would encourage you not to get caught down in numbers and more focusing on a process of how we would begin to advance this conversation toward firming up better pricing numbers, putting together a plan of financing, et cetera. So speaking of potential funding sources, the marijuana sales tax absolutely could be a key part of the core funding toward addressing this issue. Things that I've spoken to tonight, like updating those costs, updating these space allocation needs, beginning to develop a plan of financing. These are all things that are going to require the help of professionals and things that are going to require resources to pay for said services. But as I mentioned the other night, we believe that $600,000 or so is a responsible figure. That figure, that was a question I received as well, comes from an estimate put together by the Missouri Municipal League in which they took the total amount that was generated in gross sales by medicinal marijuana facilities across the state, divided it by the total number, and found that with a 3% sales tax, each, each marijuana facility would generate about $154,000 in sales tax each year. Independence having four of these, that's where the $615,000 number comes from. As you can see, the challenge with that is it assumes that a marijuana shop in, say, Chillicothe, Missouri, is going to generate the same as a marijuana shop in a metropolitan city like Independence. But it gives you a figure as a starting point. Okay, I put in some of these figures so I could give you a better sense of what we have been spending at the police facility. And again, this is just headquarters and maintenance costs over the last five years. On average, independent of some of the, like, labor costs of our staff, like municipal services, building maintenance workers worked on those. Those wouldn't be in here, but obviously, if we paid a contractor from a firm to come in and do the roof that was done earlier this year, for example, that, those labor costs would be in here. So we've spent close to 1.1, 1.2 million dollars, which on average is $225,000, 226 or so. So just keep that figure in mind. And that brings me to some potential financing options. Back in 2018, when the council asked us to take a look at this, we began to brainstorm as a staff about how we could possibly fund this ambitious plan. And we started to kind of ask ourselves, what if we stopped thinking about this as a municipal facility and started thinking about it as a development project? You know, asking ourselves, what is the economic impact of having a public safety headquarters in close proximity to your home, to your business, to your school? What are the benefits to the neighborhood and the community at large from investing in public safety in a way that is game changing for recruitment and operations? And when we changed that dialogue to focus on community benefits, the idea emerged to look at improvement districts. There are two different financing tools authorized under state law, a community improvement district and a neighborhood improvement district that have potential as part of a funding opportunity for this project. Community improvement district, which I'm going to refer to as a CID from here on out, is created by a petition of the business owners to the city council to request creation of the district. Once that petition is put together and the ordinance is adopted, that CID exists as its own separate political subdivision with its own governing body and the ability to impose taxes and special assessment. We, as the city, serve as the bank. We collect the funds. We make sure that they're using those as authorized by state law, but otherwise, they govern themselves for the intended use. Some of the examples that you may be familiar with of community improvement districts in our city today, the Nolan Road CID, the Independence Event Center CID, and believe it or not, Newtown Harmony has a CID. Again, probably anticipating the future commercial development there. A neighborhood improvement district is similar, and that is created by petition. But the difference is it is the property owners agreeing to a special assessment on their property within the boundaries of that district. Neither of these require a public vote. They are voted on by the property owners within the district that is set up. All right, so I'm going to be real frank here, admittedly. This got pretty creative in 2018. I'm going to show it to you to show what we looked at, but I'm going to walk you through some things here too. So back in 2018, this map was an idea of what we thought could be a CID, and it was large. Within that geographic area were 137 properties that if a community improvement district, the sales tax option were passed, would generate $1.8 million 2018 funds. Based on the state statute requirements of those 137 properties, we would have needed 69 of those to approve the petition to implement the community improvement district. And because that is extremely difficult to read, I'm going to show you a little bit more zoomed in. So we talked about having at the northern end up here at 24 and 291, where the old Kmart, which is now Ronson Manufacturing, the McDonald's, just all north here of the Hawthorne apartment complex. Not recommending that necessarily at this time, but again, just trying to show you what we looked at back then. but again, just trying to show you what we looked at back then. What I do think makes more sense potentially as a revenue source, if we would choose to go down this road, would be the area in the 23rd, 291, and Lee Summit area. That could be contemplated as part of that, asking these businesses to self-impose the 1% CID. And I'll show you some economics on that momentarily. Let me show you the southern end of this old idea, which was the Lee Summit Road, the Cracker Barrel and the Home Depot. So you can see stretching from Home Depot all the way up to essentially Hawthorne. I told you, it was a creative idea. We took a look at the neighborhood improvement district, which would have been residential properties basically here to the east of us. This gets a lot more complicated, asking those property owners to set up a governing board to self-impose a sales tax, or pardon me, a property tax on themselves. So I don't necessarily think this is our best play, but I just, again, wanted to show you things we looked at in the past as we tried to exhaust all of our options. This is just an indicative slide of what it looks like to set up a community improvement district. It is not a, you know, file a piece of paper with the city. If we walked out of here tonight, you're probably looking at a nine-month process to go out and visit with property owners and then to start the legal process, which involves proper notification, presentation, and eventual authorization from the city council, and then a sales tax vote by the business owners within the district. So it would take some time. And again, I just want to help manage expectations about what that might potentially look like. All right, so this is the moneymaker slide, if you will. This is potential illustrative project financing of all the things we've talked about. If you assume the sales tax brings in what the MML estimate talked about, $154,000 per facility. I failed to mention on Monday night, and I just want to illustrate that this could be a part of your financing, too, but even without a vote of the people, our approved sales taxes are already going to apply when recreational marijuana is legal next month. So our 1% local option sales tax will be captured regardless of any action we take, which could provide an extra $200,000 toward this project. Back on that slide where I talked about a community improvement district in the 23rd and 291 area, using the math that we had back in 2018, but accounting for inflation, reasonably, I think you can expect $686,000 off of the CID there. That does not take into account businesses that have opened since 2018 and some of the redevelopment that has happened in the area. So that number could fluctuate, probably in a positive direction, but that gives you at least a baseline estimate. If you brought in all of the other areas of the creative CID that we talked about in 2018, that's probably an extra $1.5 million and facility maintenance funds money we are just dumping in our headquarters year after year right now, another $226,000. So all of those tools by themselves could bring in up to $3.2 million. This is a, again, representative image of what financing looked like when we were looking at this back in 2018. We met with our bond advisor. We talked to them about our needs. It's kind of depressing to look at a building that would have cost us $35 million just five years ago. And as I mentioned Monday night, there is a definite cost to doing nothing. But nevertheless, as you can see, what I would like you to take home is we don't need to think about how to generate, you know, $65 or $90 million overnight. What we need to be thinking about is how do we start generating somewhere between $2 to $3.5 million per year in new revenue, which would provide us opportunities to do things like annual debt service financing or pursuing a lease purchase option in which we partner with a developer who would build a building and lease it back to us, or even a public-private partnership where we share the costs and the equity with a private partner. There's a lot of different ways to skin a cat on that. But what we need to start wrapping our minds around is if we're going to pursue this, getting about that $2 to $3.5 million a year, of which initiating that process, that marijuana tax could be a core part of that funding, though, again, not in and of itself. We talked about bonds the other night, and I want to make, I said I would look at state statute to provide you information on that. This is the information as of earlier this year on the next election dates and when things would have to be filed. And then the third column tells you the requirement of voter approval to pass it. Never is there a time when a simple majority will get a geo-bond passed. The lowest voter approval threshold is 57.1% or 4/7 voter approval. And you can see on the schedule, likely the rest of this year, if the city were pursuing a geo-bond outside of April, which, I mean, that's not realistic. You're going for a 2/3 majority. It would be a year plus from now, next April, when that number would come back to 4/7s. So those are a lot of different options and a lot of different information, but success for us tonight looks like leaving with firm direction of where the council would like to allocate these funds. So staff can get that information pulled together for you to act this coming Tuesday night. And with that, I will conclude my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. I appreciate it. Any questions from the council members regarding this, or any thoughts or ideas?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, have you had a chance to go over the newer parts of this presentation with Chief Dussman?
Yes, we've been in pretty close communication over the last several days as we gathered information from the chief and our other department directors who provided some of these recommendations to you. And Chief and I have had extensive conversation over the last several days.
So I'm assuming, well, I'm not going to assume. What's his position? And can you provide any feedback, if he's gotten feedback from the FOP or any of his staff as well?
Yeah, let me say that Chief has spoken with leadership from the lodge. The lodge has not taken a position on whether we need a 60 million or a 90 or whatever million-dollar building. But in terms of using this ballot measure toward funding for a facility, leadership is supportive of and recommending of that. I will also tell you two more conversational stories that the chief shared with me that I think are important to share. He was taking a group of board members from the Chamber of Commerce through the building on Wednesday morning, told me that one of our officers, who's a veteran member of the force, was working out in the plate room and said, "Chief, are you actually going to get us a new building this time?" And Chief Dussman said, "That's our goal." So there was enthusiasm there. And the chief has told me he's heard from our rank and file, the men and women out on the front lines, that this is absolutely something that hit their radar as soon as it started getting talked about Monday evening and something that has them excited again. And hopefully, we're able to break through that wall this time and build on the foundation that prior councils have laid in trying to get this done, but get elevated and over that wall this time.
I appreciate that. Obviously, 615 plus 205, that doesn't get us there right off the bat. If we dedicate this to a facility or construction or maintenance or put this toward a new public safety center, in the meantime, what would you use those funds for?
Well, I've had a, not an extensive, but a little bit of an opportunity to visit with the deputy city manager about this, who is, I put him up against anybody across the metro as far as understanding development services. And there are behind-the-scenes costs, I might call them. We all get to see the new buildings, the facades, the ribbon cuttings, et cetera. But things like understanding true cost of construction, making sure you have a solid design that meets the needs of your force both today and decades from now, making sure you've got, even at a minimum, illustrative images of what a facility might look like so you can start having some of those community conversations, working with our bond council to develop an appropriate plan of financing. Those professional services have real substantial costs behind them. They're not the glamorous part of the project, but they are the absolute necessary critical foundation of any successful project. And that's why I keep using that phrase "core funding", because today, we don't have that capacity. Frankly, that's where that conversation fell apart back in 2018, 19, was moving beyond just some of that initial planning and into fine-tuning those costs. So those funds absolutely can be used to address those early era scope, planning, financing costs associated with that.
You know, one more question. The best time, if we were ultimately going to finish financing a new facility with a bond, would be a year from now, right?
To seek the voter approval?
To seek voter approval.
That is correct, sir. So that would be my recommendation, anyway.
And if council supports this, and we put this forward for voter approval in support of this new facility, this tax, that does give us the rest of this year to decide on the remaining funding mechanism, to decide if we're going to pursue the CID, pursue the design, to do all the behind-the-scenes work that you're talking about, and then make that final decision. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does. And, you know, I think that would move us past what at times has felt like a ready-fire-aim approach of, let's do this idea, we may or may not. It'd be like buying a car and hoping, I know I need to make these monthly payments, but I'm not sure, we'll just hope and pray we can do it. This would provide us adequate revenue funding to, like I keep saying, engage those professionals, do this thoughtfully, develop it thoughtfully, put together the plan of financing. I mean, one thing I didn't even reference that should be a part of any conversation about facilities and making sure you have adequate funds is making sure you set up a long-term preventative maintenance budget. There's been too many times we have put together a new infrastructure project, and it's not had adequate money to go in and make those annual repairs, annual maintenance, annual cleanup to keep it. And that's something we did very well with the Cable Dahmer Arena. I mean, the building's 10 years old, and it still looks very new. We've upgraded in there, we've made repairs, we've made modern-day enhancements to it. That should be part of the thoughtful conversation. So absolutely, these funds help us make those kinds of plans, and we do it, we do it right, and we do it thoughtfully. And we end up with a project that not only we are confident as we head into construction, but for decades to come, the citizens know that there are adequate funds to take care of that asset and keep it something they're proud of.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. To my colleagues, to the officers that are here, Chief Dussman, I, hopefully, you know by now, I have immense respect for all of you. And without any hesitation, I fully support using these funds to take the first step toward building a police station, a public safety center. You know, there's always going to be a better time to start. There's always going to be a better funding mechanism to wait for. There's always going to be a better situation. We are well past the better time. We have an opportunity right now to take the first step and finally, 50 years on, show these folks that live and work in that dank building and protect us every day that we're behind them. And I am massively in support of this tax for a new building. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you talked about land acquisition costs. Are those baked into your $67 million, or that's just the building costs?
So those figures, again, are real number, based off of real numbers I was able to find of projects that were recently constructed. I can't tell you that those definitively have land acquisition costs in them, though I assume they did. What I do know for sure is that this entire campus was acquired for $1.5 million and was 14 acres. What we'd want to do is see how much has been sold off for this building and for the communication center just immediately to the south of us, and then figure out what remains and needs to be acquired for this project.
Anyone else? Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as many of you know in this room, I'm a police officer in a much smaller jurisdiction. I was accused recently of, and probably rightfully so, of having a bias towards the police department. And I want, more than anything, to see this police department having the equipment that they want. My main concern with completely dedicating this tax towards a police building is if anything, if all the other funding fails, then what do we do with that tax money? And if it's written into, and if it's written into the ballot language, we can't use it for anything else. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. I do believe it's time for us to consider this building. My biggest thing is, is always that fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers. Asking them to take on a debt of $68 to $89 million requires from us a plan for repayment. And I think that we've laid out some ideas, but I think the real work is in bringing forth those revenue plans of repayment. I have, for two years plus, asked that we, as a city, look at revenues owed to us. And I know in my district, there is a super TIF that owes us a great deal of money. And if we were able to collect what is owed to us, we could pay for this building. And we wouldn't have to go to the residents and the taxpayers. And I don't know that we can, but I don't know that we have been proactive to pursue whatever it requires to do so. And I think it's time for this council to ask that, as part of this project, that we look for any way that we can collect revenues owed to this city. And so I'm going to ask, if we could, to have the Audit and Finance Committee to begin to look at this from the standpoint, the Crackerneck Creek Super TIF, and begin to look at any remedy for collection. And I don't know how we would go about doing that, but... And I don't know how we would go about doing that, but that is a formal request from the third district to look at that and begin to seek out remedies for revenues owed to us. That's the first thing. Is, is there something formal that I will need to do to do that, or can we put that on the next agenda?
We absolutely can, council member. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 3:00 PM. You're more than welcome to attend. You can make that request on the record. You've made it here on the record, where I'm happy to add that to the agenda. So happy to have you, join us, happy to make the request on your behalf. We'll, we'll assign that to the management analyst first off to do some investigation and gather all the relevant records.
And so I'll make that formal request. I'll make that formal request tonight.
Yes, sir.
If that happen. We have some creative ways to pay this back. I, I don't have a problem with that. I think the county will make it difficult to ask, to ask people to self-impose property taxes, probably not very popular. So I think we probably ought to just look in any other direction. I'm glad you mentioned the facility maintenance, because this building was a problem right out of the gate. And for us to not have planned maintenance on this building doesn't show a responsibility to tax dollars. And when we ask for any amount of money, we have to have a planned maintenance schedule on our city facilities, just like they do in the military. You just, you're just doing monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, annually maintenance, inspections, repairs, and, and you just take care of the issues. This type of funds that we're asking for and the type of building we have, it's only the responsible thing. So I'm, I appreciate that. But I, we challenge that we take those revenues that, that you projected for maintenance out as a repayment, because we just need to be able to put those back in. We got to have that. And then I asked for any pandemic money, if we had any reports on that?
Yeah, so we looked at that, and of all the many things the pandemic terms did allow, utilization for facility construction was not among the eligible uses.
Yeah.
Go figure.
Yeah. Well, I don't think it will surprise anyone that I would make a statement like $10 million for bike paths and $0 for public safety. I, that does not please me, and, but that, that I understand. So, but we can ill afford to just let revenue just sit out there. I, I fear that if we do not take an aggressive stance on this super TIF, that this could become a default issue for the city, and we can ill afford that, especially if we're going to go ask for bond issues, because you need a building, fire needs new stations. We have a lot going forward, and we just need to, to plan financially for the things that are coming our way. And I say, we can't sit and wait, and we need to be proactive, because we don't even know what rates will be in a year if we're, how, how soon will we know what our rates would be on a bond?
It would, would be something we would talk to the financial advisor that we have about. But again, you, Councilor, and I, you've had these conversations, the market is volatile day to day, is literally going to be a matter of the day that we, we go to market of, of what that's going to be. But the way things have unfolded thus far, the sooner the better. And if I could just add one thing to what you said there, among those needs of, of money never being cheaper than it is today, don't forget those other infrastructure needs of the things like Mr. Nesbit, as much as I would miss him to talk about 35th and Nolan at the council meetings, addressing some of those critical, long-term infrastructure needs are critical.
And I agree. We have, we have many, many pressing needs on our plate, but right now, first obligation of government is the general welfare and the safety of our community. You need to be safe, they need to be safe. We need to have functional facilities to house our, our, our first responders in and be responsible to them. So I, I hope that our taxpayers understand what we're going to be asking is, we understand that it's a lot, and so we've got to work hard as a city and as a team to make this work. So I, I commit to you, if, if you need help going door to door, talking with people, putting signs in yards, I will help do that. I will do that. I'll stand with FOP, I'll stand with PD, and to help make this happen. That's my commitment to you.
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. City Manager, you may not have the answer to this, but is there a way that we could word the ballot language so that we could pay for a new police building if, if all of their methods, any of their financing methods fail, just more of a generic term like public safety use?
So a couple of things there. The, the short answer to your question is, is yes, sir. Typically, when a new tax source is authorized by the state legislature, part of the legislation includes ballot language that you, you are required by statute to place in front of the voters. Because this was done by constitutional amendment, the only thing that is in that amendment is literally saying cities can go and pursue an additional 3% sales tax on this. It does not specify what the language says. So we have, this is probably one of the rare times where we have complete freedom to specify, if we wish, in the ballot language. The other place where we have latitude to, to lay that out, of course, would be in the ordinance that calls for the election. Of those six communities that I mentioned, that I did that survey yesterday, a lot of them used phrases like police operations, police needs, police infrastructure. They didn't, none of those six specifically said building a new building or renovating an existing building. They used some, some broad terms, and even the ones that were doing non-public safety uses. It was broad language like street maintenance or neighborhood stabilization. So I would recommend that you provide enough specificity to the voters about how you intend to use those, without getting into such a granular level of detail that this and future councils are boxed in and end up with a funding source for which you are dreaming up reasons to spend it instead of addressing ongoing.
I would personally like to use something like public safety operations, and then that's kind of all inclusive between all our public safety members, police department, fire department. So in 30 years or 20 years, if this building's paid off, and the fire department needs some money, maybe we could use it for them, or, you know, something like that.
Anyone else? Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I, I told someone earlier today that, you know, I feel like in a perfect world, we would ask the voters to just let, put this towards general funds, but I don't think we live in a perfect world, haven't seen that yet anyway. And so in my time on Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee, I got to see the, the needs of our public safety teams. And certainly, my approach for these particular funds and what I see as the highest need of our city at the present time is for a public safety center. And so, you know, I'm certainly in favor of this. I agree that the language needs to be broad. I, I think something along the lines of public safety facilities and operations would be helpful so that we can, because someday we will, if we use the funds for a bond payment, we will have that bond paid off someday, and we need to be able to continue to use those funds like, like was said earlier. So I'm certainly in favor of that. I do think we need to be careful relative to the revenues. I, I think we need to look for opportunities for revenues. I'm not, you know, a, a, the city like this benefits the entire community, not just a portion of the community. And so I think we need to discuss that more and then think about that more. But I'm certainly open to having all of those discussions, and would look forward to that opportunity. But, but I think this is our highest and greatest need at the moment.
Anyone else? Other discussion? Very good. So, Mr. City Manager, a question on process. If I'm remembering correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've got the first read in the ballot language that we've put in place.
Correct.
And it would be general and generic?
It, it's.
Or am I misreading?
It is very general and generic and leans towards neighborhood stabilization, preservation, cleanup, code enforcement, et cetera.
Okay.
Well.
Go ahead.
Not the ballot language.
No, no, the, the, I'm.
Let's be clear.
Yes, sir.
The ordinance as it currently reads.
The, the ordinance, the ballot language is a reflection of what virtually every city across the state is, is using, and that was the language put together by the municipality.
Okay. And we'll be second reading that next Tuesday, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion on this tonight? I stated, we talked the other day, I am support of, and strongly support of, moving ahead with this project so that we provide adequate public safety building for our professionals who serve us in this city. It is my belief that these public safety members are the hub of our city, and it is very important that we address this issue and take a leadership role in driving this to completion. It'll take a lot of work on behalf of every mayor. It'll take a lot of work on behalf of the city manager and the city staff, but I'm confident that if we work together and we ask the citizens to join us, and then we can get it done. So with that, any other further discussion before we move on? Anything else from you, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing from me.
So if I would. Be able to call this meeting to. Adjourn the meeting. Those, do we need to take a vote? Okay. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.